Good morning. Welcome to our county commission meeting. We're gonna start with a prayer, reading or thought, and the pledge of allegiance. And we look to the audience for any participate- participants who would like to offer that, a prayer, reading or thought, and pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone who would be willing to participate with us? Okay, seeing none? Any volunteers up here? I'd be willing to, usually praying all the time. I'll pray.
We'll do this in the pledge?
Sure. Like, I'll do the, I'll do the, I'll do the prayer. Our heavenly Father, we're grateful to be able to assemble here and to work and, and, and look at issues and be able to find ways and solutions that will be meaningful and impactful to citizens and ourselves. We're thankful, Father, for this great country that we live in, and especially this state and county. We're thankful, Father, for the many blessings of liberty and happiness and freedoms that we enjoy. We pray always that we can go forward recognizing that there are many who are less fortunate than we are, and we live in such a great place. We pray for our military and our officers and those who protect us. We ask that thy guiding and protecting hand will be with them. We're thankful always for a beautiful day and opportunities that are before us, and we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Has joined the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll, we'll build our agenda now. We'll put everything, both the consent, the published consent agenda and the published regular agenda, we'll temporarily for now move everything over to, um, to being consented to, either approved, ratified, or agreed to. And then the, the items that we need to discuss and talk about, we'll pull off of that, that agenda and, and have those discussions. So with that, we have a number of consent items. It's like fourteen. The only one that I have, uh, is number, number seven just has, I, I, it'd be great to leave it on consent. There's just a few little typos in there, ands, and his and her instead of their, and a little spacing. So if it's all right with the other commissioners, leave it on consent, but there's just a couple of words that need to be clarified.
And pardon my pen?
Okay. All right, other than that, is there any others on the published consent agenda that we need to?
None for me.
Okay. Moving to our published right, regular agenda. We could hold number one for a presentation, of course. Um, hold number two. Number three. Number five. And number twelve. Discussion. Any others?
Nope.
Oh yeah, twelve is the one. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? On number four on regular agenda, there was a recommendation from the, from the staff, Patrick Warrow, that you not do that. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, and the reason behind that, and if you're comfortable doing it, and even though I consent, that's fine.
Uh, we pulled that one off.
Oh, you pulled number four off?
We pulled number four off.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that. Thank you.
That's the reason why we pulled it.
Okay.
At least in my perspective. Any others?
No, I didn't realize. You're saying four on the regular agenda?
Four.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, one, two, four, and five.
I think you said three, and that's why.
Oh, three? Did I say three? Okay, I'm sorry. I meant four.
Okay.
I meant four. That's, that would lend to the confusion there.
Yes, sorry about that.
Yeah.
So three on regular agenda is gonna be on consent.
On consent. One, two, four, and five.
Makes more sense, like, well, I don't know why you're worrying about getting it in, but.
Right. Thank you. Okay. With that, then, we will have the, the trust come up. We had a little presentation yesterday from them on, in our department head meeting, and they hopefully always come with good news for us. And a presentation, so thanks for being here.
Thank you for your time. I'm Brande Okerson with the Utah Local Government's Trust. Steve Hansen, our CEO with, with the trust as well. And we're here to present an award to the county for participating in one of the programs we have called our trust accountability program. And for six years in a row now, the county's done a great job of participating in this and being partners with us in helping to reduce losses and putting these things in place that really do that. Um, part of that is the, the county has a, a risk management committee, uh, where they meet regularly to review things and, and put things in place that, that reduce those losses there, and also an accident review board. Uh, they also have return to work programs that are managed, driver's qualification programs, and other things that really make a difference. And we find that the entities around the state that we work with that do these types of things, they have the most success in reducing losses. And so we really appreciate being, being able to work with you guys and do those things. Um, so I'll leave this, uh, award with you today, but as part of that, uh, we also send out a check for five percent of your liability premium, which was sent out earlier this year for nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and ten cents. And, uh, that's just, again, the, the appreciation for working with us and being able to do those things. Uh, in addition to this, being that you've now done it at least three years in a row, up to six now, uh, you're also eligible to get a discount on your work comp premium up to four and a half percent for that. And, and again, we, we appreciate working with you. The commissioners have done a great job of being involved with that. Uh, Dave Shawcroft, Karen Fairbanks, and the department heads here have all worked hard to, to make these things happen and have these programs go. And again, we appreciate that, and we're grateful to work with you guys, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Good, Stephen.
And I'd just like to echo my appreciation for the longstanding partnership we've enjoyed. Uh, when the trust looks at partners, of course, we look at the management team involved in that partnership, and, uh, and we just appreciate the professionalism and the expertise that you bring to the table in terms of helping with accountability, helping all of us to be accountability and recognizing the teams and appreciating the teams for their efforts and, and making a difference. And so thank you very much for your partnership. We look forward to a bright future. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I know you know from us that, uh, we appreciate, but publicly, you know, I think for all of us, um, uh, we appreciate the work you do. And, and not just, not just the work in the sense of adding up the X's and O's and, you know, the costs and stuff, but the proactive, uh, uh, feeling that you give to us to, you know, to do things different and to inspire us to do more and better. So thank you for, um, you know, pushing us along as well and keeping things on the forefront for us. So thank you for, for the great work you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Wait, we need to pitch it with this.
Those are heavy.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, number, number two on our regular agenda is to approve the tax actions contained in the recommendation letter.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Paul Jones with the Attorney's Office.
Yes. Um, for me, there are, uh, five of them that I'd like to look at together as a commission. BMC West Corporation.
Those first five, right?
Well, actually, there's four that I personally would like to look at. The BMC West Corporation, the Taylor and Gill, E-Hat, Eric Dunn, Kirk, and April Peed.
Okay. BMC West, um, there's, um, some confusion or some question there about the checks that they sent in. Um, they claimed that they sent two checks to pay their property taxes at the end of November last year, and, uh, the treasurer's office did not receive one of those checks. And so that, that, the property tax associated with those have now incurred late penalty and interest. I, this was on a tax letter about a month ago, or maybe five or six weeks ago, and, uh, the Board of Commissioners asked me to follow up with BMC West and see if they had any other documentation to show whether or not they've cut the second check. They did provide a copy of, uh, and it's in the materials there. They provided a copy of what looks like, uh, check number sixteen sixty. It is dated November twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen. I believe that's the check that is in question.
Right.
They also provided a check of, a, a copy of check sixteen fifty-nine. Um, of course, they did provide additional documentation that does not necessarily establish that it was in the envelope that was mailed, so we don't really know what happened to check sixteen sixty. Is it sitting somewhere at BMC West? Uh, did the treasurer's office's processes fail us? Uh, it's kind of unclear.
They didn't send a copy at the back of the check showing a deposit receipt on the back of it?
Right. Yeah, no, check sixteen sixty wasn't, you know, it was never deposited. It was never cashed. It was never, they probably canceled it by now, or I hope they have.
Well, I think it has, had a ninety days automatic cancellation.
Automatic cancellation, yeah. So sixteen sixty fell through a crack somewhere, either on BMC West's end or theoretically could be on our end.
I personally don't think it's on our end. I don't think that, I, I don't think that anybody saw it and shredded it or threw it in the garbage or anything of that nature. I just don't think that happened. Um, I, I don't, I don't know what happened. Um, it's hard to tell for sure. Now, if I remember correctly, I'm going back to it, it was, it has been paid though. Everything's been paid, right? So.
Right, it's been paid. Yeah, they're asking for.
It's all been paid. They're just asking for a refund.
A refund of the penalty and interest.
Um, I, I personally don't think that there was any, I don't know what happened to it. I don't know where it went. I don't think that the, uh, one, I don't, it, it appears to me that BMC West, um, intended to pay for it, um, and maybe they didn't put it in, maybe it slipped out. Who knows what happened, what happened to it? Uh, and so I'd, I, I would be inclined to abate the penalties and interest on it, of course, not the tax, but the penalties and interest, um, on that just, just because of circumstances that I see there.
Um, the recommendation of the treasurer on this one is to deny it?
That's right.
Right? Just on the basis that?
That their processes are, um, that they have processes in place that they don't misplace checks.
And I don't think they do either. I don't.
Okay. Um, and the penalty and interest, this, I mean, this is a significant amount of penalty and interest? Is this just a, did this bill unpaid for quite some time?
Well, it was a, it was a large tax amount. It's multiple parcels. The tax amount was thirty-six thousand dollars. And so it was, it was paid in March, so, um.
So as soon as they realized that that second check hadn't?
I, yeah, I think they took, I think they took action pretty quickly and paid it. And, but they still incurred penalty and interest on a pretty large tax amount. And so the penalty and interest is significant just because of the tax amount, not because of the time.
And we have had something similar to that, that we did abate penalties and interest from our last conversation that you mentioned. Simp, sort of similar.
Probably. I can't, I can't think of it right now, but.
You mentioned there was a check, three checks.
Oh, yeah, no, that's right. Yeah, 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 that's right.
In the middle. There was one in the middle.
Yeah, previously, the middle check number was missing. And so, um, I believe we abated that one. Yes. Dana would like to speak to the commission, if you're so inclined.
Sure.
Dana Barney, County Treasurer's Office. When we failed to pay on time, and then they would have received a delinquent notice the end of December, saying you have till the end of January to pay with just a one percent penalty. They still didn't pay by the end of January, so the penalty increased from one percent to two and a half percent, and interest was attached. So they would have been notified in time to avoid that second one and a half percent and the interest on there, which was sufficient, significant.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, so that's interesting. So tell me the timeline on that. So they received a note, a notice that they could pay it with one percent?
Mm-hmm. The end of, well, right before Christmas, we send out delinquent notices to anybody who has any delinquent taxes on property.
Okay.
That gives them through the end of January to pay with just a one percent penalty, no interest. Most people will call us and say, hey, I thought I paid this. What do we need to do? Get that right. They didn't actually send a check till March. So they would have had through the end of January to pay with just that one percent. And then they still went through, all the way through February with no payment, and then into the first week of March.
Okay, that changes my mind.
So.
Thank you for that information.
Any other?
Any other question?
Biggest thing.
Okay. Well, we'll leave that one on, in my opinion. Leave that one.
Right.
Okay. Uh, how about if we go to the next one, then?
Okay, um, the E-Hat parcel. The E-Hats, um, recorded a vesting deed, and the address on the vesting deed, um, which is where we would send notice to, was the address of the lot that they purchased. And the lot did not have a mailbox on it or any way to, to receive mail at that address. It was just a vacant parcel. Uh, but it was the address they provided. And, um, of course, when we sent tax notices to that address, there were complications. And, um, so they weren't able to, so they didn't get notice in time to pay their taxes on time, again, because of the address that they provided on the vesting deed. And they've incurred some taxes and, or some penalty and interest on the, on the parcel, and they're asking for relief from the penalty and interest.
So what does it say on the vesting deed when it says, when you say provided address? Is that an address, is that an address of the property? Is that, I, I could see some confusion. Is that an address to send information to? What does that look like?
The address on the vesting deed, um, in the upper left-hand corner, I mean, it says, when recorded, mail, and then it says tax mailing address. And then it has this address. And so it is the address that they're, that, that the property owners provide the county for us to provide tax notices to. for us to provide tax notices to. It even has tax mailing address right in the upper left-hand corner. So we, so we provided tax notices at that address that they provided. Of course, you, you know, they provided the actual property address, but the, the vesting deed indicates that that's the tax mailing address. And that's how we've always treated those addresses, as tax mailing addresses.
You know, if they've changed it?
Have they changed it now?
Yeah.
I'd imagine, but... See if I have. I don't have a, I don't have a, uh, indication that they've changed it.
So probably haven't.
All right, Mr. Dunn, this is a personal property account. And, um, this account was estimated because the property owner did not, um, file an equipment list with the county. Um, of course, no surprise here, they did not like the estimation, and, uh, they're asking for the entire amount to be abated. I will say, in the owner's statement, um, he says that they're, that they're well below the exempt amount.
Ten thousand.
I think we provided you some, some follow-up information on that, on that issue. Uh, this property was sold, the business was sold, or the, the personal property was sold, um, this year. And the new owners filed a, um, personal property account with the county, and the value of the property exceeds the exemption amount. It's at fourteen thousand, it's above fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
But ultimately, this property owner did not file. He was estimated. And now he's asking the county to waive that tax amount. With the additional information that the, that the property actually exceeds the exemption amount, uh, based on the, the filing of the new owner.
You know, if that filing of the new owner was, uh, was it solely on that one business? Or was there, was that an acquisition that...
Well, it wasn't that, well, they, they just acquired this business, um... My understanding is that it's just on that.
Just on that?
Business, but I cannot say with a hundred percent certainty. It is possible that they've included other equipment that they already owned or they acquired elsewhere. It, it is possible.
Okay. And then Kirk and April?
Okay, um, this situation is, um, somewhat complicated. They purchased, um, a property in two thousand fifteen. Um, I believe it was a new build. And so the property was owned by the build, the, the property was owned by the developer or the builder. They purchased it in two thousand fifteen. They purchased it in June, and so the tax notice actually went to the builder, not to the property owner. So the tax notice for two thousand fifteen went to the builder. Then, there was some, uh, changes with the parcel numbers. And so that parcel number was killed, and a new parcel number was generated. And so, um, they received notice for sixteen and thereon, which, which all those taxes have been paid. And so this is really kind of a closing, you know, at closing is when this should really be taken care of. The two thousand fifteen taxes should have been taken care of in twenty fif, in, um, at closing in, uh, two thousand fifteen. I will note that at closing, I believe you can see in the letter from the builder that, um, that the new owner was credited, uh, for a prorated amount of taxes. So they were given credit for the taxes. But the new owner and the title company, between, between them, they never paid the two thousand fifteen taxes. Then again, that parcel number was killed. And, um, that's significant because the new owner wouldn't have got the delinquent tax notices over the, over the years. But he was notified, um, I'm guessing that we, we, we probably... Well, we may have sent them a May tax sale notice, I'm not sure, but, uh, but eventually the builder notified the property owner that the taxes were still outstanding. My recommendation is to deny because it should have been, should have been taken care of by the, the new owner or the title company at closing. Should have been paid.
And you're, and you're confident that they were, that they had notification? Proper notification?
Well, they never res, um, I'm not confident that they received anything in the mail from us, but I am confident that, that they closed on a property and them and the title company, that they were responsible to cover those two thousand fifteen taxes.
They, and usually, I'm not, I mean, does that usually happen with the title company paying, paying those? Or is that usually a responsibility of the individual to do that? I mean, I know ultimately it's the individual, but I'm just saying that...
You're right.
I mean, uh, for an individual who's going through and signing fifty thousand pages in email, I mean, putting their initials everywhere, it gets really confusing.
Right.
And you're, I'm just wondering...
Normally, the title company would, would help the buyer take care of that.
In other words, the buyer, the buyer may have, because I, I also, I have some sympathy for this homeowner in this situation. But they may have recourse with their title company.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Ms. Barney may have some comments.
Can I show you something?
Sure.
This is what their act notice would have looked like the very next year. This would have been their sixteen year, and their seventeen year, and their eighteen year. All would say prior taxes to the new one, all treasurer. It's saying it was a field lien. And then also in December of, whatever those years, they would have received a lien court letter saying you have to link the taxes on this property.
Is this the one that went to the builder or to the owner?
No, this would have gone to the owner. The builder would also have received that lien court notice, because they're the original owner. But because the lien was attached to their property, every December, they would have received a lien court notice saying there is taxes. So they would have been notified directly to them in sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And their tax notice would all say...
And we sent it to their address, their address at, in Saratoga Springs.
Yeah, it's at the bottom corner there. That's the address we would have been mailing to.
Okay. And when, when does, does this go out after all, there's already penalties and interest attached to it?
There would have been penalties and interest attached to it, but that would have, had they called us in sixteen, when they first got that, it would have stopped the bleeding in sixteen instead of continuing for another three and a half years. Because their first notice probably would have been their tax notice in sixteen, which they would have received in October. Then they would have had the delinquent notice they would have received December of sixteen. So that would have been their first real indication that they did have delinquent taxes.
And so they've been adequately notified.
Yeah. I mean, they would have, like I say, they would have had some penalty and interest before they were really notified directly to them.
Do you know what, how long that is, or where that was, where that line would be?
That would be... The, the first notice they would have received would have been the end of December of sixteen, and it would have had any penalty and interest calculated through January thirty-first of seventeen.
So that's, and we're talking about fifteen and sixteen? So is that, is that a one year or two years before they had their proper notification?
I would say one full year.
One full year?
Would have had a year's worth of penalty and interest before their first notification. And that penalty would have been both parts, that first initial one and one percent and the one and a half.
Right. Okay. Well, I don't know what that figures out, but you know what, do you know what that, that penalties and interest on one year would be?
What's the tax amount on that one year?
I'd be inclined to abate that, that portion of it.
One and a half percent of that. I can figure it for you.
Okay.
If I go back to my desk.
Sure.
All right.
I guess the question is, is if, if one of the other Commissioners feels the same way with that, should we be doing that work, but if there's no...
I mean, for, for me, generally speaking on these, I trust the work of the Treasurer's Office on it. They're very, very diligent. It's their job. I know Kim, as an elected official, is diligent in overseeing these, and, and I know they take these reviews very seriously, so, yeah.
And, and I would agree, and on this one, even though I have sympathies for the homeowner, I do think that there's recourse elsewhere. It doesn't have to come before the county. Uh, this was an error. There was clearly, um, credit made to pay the taxes at the closing statement, and those taxes should have been remitted. So I, I don't think this is a county issue. And that homeowner will have another way to seek their remedies.
Okay, and I'll just make a statement. It has nothing to do with, uh, the work being done by the, by, by Kim's office, or I think that there's a responsibility, personally, that I look at it to make sure and go through it to, to, to weigh it out and balance it. And, and that's a, that's a responsibility that as myself, as a Commissioner, I take seriously. And so I, I, I look at every one of them, as you're well aware.
In speaking with Chris Paulson, the, the County Assessor, he mentioned that if the Board of Commissioners are so inclined, they could, they could look further into the Eric Dunn request to find out if all of the property on the new filing was acquired from a previous owner, if you would like.
Okay. Fair enough. That'd be great. Okay. Um, so if the, if the Commission's inclined with the Eric Dunn, well, we can continue that one for one week. Um, I also, on the, on the Taylor and Jill E-Hart one, would be inclined to abate that tax, if there's any, if there's any appetite for that. Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I would move that we, um, approve the property tax actions contained in the letter, regular agenda item number two. With the exception that we would continue the Dunn request for lending.
One second.
Okay, I get a motion and a, and a second for the approval of the tax actions as contained in the recommendation letter. I, I will be, I'll vote, I'll vote yes on it, but I do want to note that I, I would have, uh, preferred that the Taylor and Jill E-Hart one be differently. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That passes three zero, with the noted exceptions there. Okay, thank you. Okay, number four. Number four is to approve and authorize the signing of the registered form, the two thousand twenty census, the new, new construction program. Uh, we, we have gone through this and working with, with Dave and others when it comes to the census program. Uh, I know they keep coming back and asking us, and, and Patrick, um, had some comments on there that I think hopefully we've all read and kind of see where it is. I'm, I'm inclined to, uh, to devote no on this, but if there's any other discussions with it.
I don't feel like I, um, am aware of the issue where, so is there a recommendation that this, or is there someone who wants to speak to this?
No, we went, we went through this once before, and, and we said no. Uh, and the reason why is, is, is it looks like we're getting tasked to do a lot of work with no real benefit, and that's kind of what Patrick was saying as well, is...
And, and that was my, I don't know, Rob, or someone can speak to that. That was kind of my impression of it, was what do we, what extra do we get through participation in this?
Well, just a couple of things to understand today. Number one, the deadline is this week to respond. So we, we don't really have an ability to continue it. We have to either say yes or no. Um, it, Mr. Warrow reviewed this, has been involved in the last two census cycles, and, and didn't feel like that the benefit the county received in the last two census cycles justified all the work that was being put forward. In addition to that, in his, in his, uh, recommendation, he does mention that other cities are actually doing this kind of work, which makes it somewhat redundant on the part of the county, um, to do this type of work. Um, and felt like that we are adequately handling new construction as it comes in. One option you could do would be to table this, and we can contact Mr. Warrow and see if he's available to come in and talk about this. That's an option. I, I don't know his schedule. I have not talked to him much.
So I, I guess I'm just not really familiar, uh, with any of these details. I, I would assume that obviously we have an interest in making sure that we are adequately represented in the census. But is your point that really, even if we were to go be a part of this program, it would only pick up the new construction that's in unincorporated areas of the county?
Well, what it references is new construction from March first, two thousand eighteen, up and through April first of two thousand twenty is the intended new construction that it's supposed to, to help pick up and address and do all those kinds of things that they do with the census. But, um, it doesn't necessarily reference previous before that, before the, um, March first, two thousand eighteen. As to whether it's only out in an incorporated county, um, I couldn't answer that without spending more time on it. I was not involved in this, just to be honest.
And, and what, what burden does it place on the county?
Well, that's what Mr. Warrow is the one who, who is the one who is involved heavily and has been in the last two census cycles, and that's the one that, if you want to get a report as to what burden, what time commitment, it would, would involve, I think you might want to have him come, if possible, have a representative from his office come and explain that. Because I, I, I can't adequately represent that to you today. But we could, we could, we could table it, and, uh, we can get on the phone and see if he can show up over here. Maybe after a closed session, just bring it back up and discuss it.
I guess, is there any concern, um, up here that, that not participating in this program does not, not participating would cause our census numbers to not be adequately represented?
From, from what I've read and looked into this, this is duplicate work from what I've seen. So, again, it's, we're relying on the cities to some degree and trusting that they're going through and doing it, which they've committed to do. And I don't know, Rob, do we have a list of the municipalities that have agreed to do that? Or if we could get that?
All, all, all Mr. Warrow says is several Utah County cities are participating, including Provo, which would make our efforts redundant. I'm just quoting him. Again, I, I have not been heavily involved in this at all.
That's, so from that comment, I was kind of like...
But we could, we could bring it, we could ask him to come and talk about which cities are, are doing this. We, we could do those things. I, I, I don't know if he's in the office today or not, but that would be something we could, we could do if you wanted to do that. If you really wanted to pursue this further and have that discussion.
I don't feel like we have to do that. I, you know, I, I'm not fully up to speed on this issue. I'm uncomfortable moving forward or talking to him in a closed session, but if the other two have diligence this item, then I'm, I'm uncomfortable moving forward.
I mean, I would be happy to try and contact him just to answer any questions. And, and then if we, if we can, or whatever, we can do with it after closed, but...
Let's just table it.
Yeah, if you want to do that, I mean, if you have questions, let's, let's try to address them.
Because I'm basing mine just off of the things that Rob read, and he hasn't asked any questions on it, so...
I move that we table item number four.
Okay.
I get a motion and a second to table agenda item number four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? So you're going to make a phone call, right? Okay. That passes three zero. Number five is to approve or authorize the signing of the Miss Utah County Scholarship Agreement.
Hello, Commissioners, I apologize, I was gone last week, wasn't able to address the concerns. Um, I've invited a couple of representatives from the Miss Utah County Scholarship Organization to address, um, the program. And so if you have any questions for me directly, I'd happy to, be happy to answer those. If not, I will turn the time over to them to kind of, uh, give you a rundown of what they do and, and how it might benefit the county.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Make sure and just state your name so we can put you on record there.
All right. I'm Tiffany Miller.
And I'm Madison Formay. We're from the Utah County Scholarship...
And I'm Madison Formay. We're from the Utah County Scholarship Program. Uh, it was brought to our attention that it's under consideration to either, uh, continue or not continue the program, so we're kind of here to just hopefully be a positive push for the program. I competed in Miss Utah County. I'm not gonna say how many years ago, cause that was a long time ago. I'll let her tell you how many years ago she did.
And I was Miss Utah County twenty seventeen, so I was in here not long ago with Commissioner Lee, playing piano for all of you and representing the county.
Uh, I think that, um, what I want to mostly speak to is the benefit that I think that the program does for the county. Currently, gosh, I, I can't even remember how many years. Um, I've been involved with the Utah County Pageant for about seven years. Um, I was the director for three, and then have been kind of on the sidelines since. But I feel as if for, for the program to continue, we have to acknowledge that. I think you all know as well as anybody that Utah, uh, trails the country in female leadership. And, uh, Miss Utah Organization is one of, actually the biggest, uh, program that gives scholarship to women. And that's what this program does, is lets these women have the opportunity to receive scholarship and to serve the, the community that, that they are receiving the scholarship from, uh, and then also allows them to go continue on to Miss Utah, which, uh, in our state actually is a provider of sixty-five thousand dollars in scholarship. And the Miss America Organization as a whole is twenty million dollars in scholarship for women. So like I said, it is the leading program for, uh, scholarship for women. Currently, I think that, uh, the Utah County Program, uh, is around two thousand? Two thousand for their, for their scholarship contribution, uh, to the girls in the county, and the, the county, uh, acts as an open pageant where any girls from the county who live, work, or, uh, go to school in the county may compete. So, I mean, that's pretty awesome. There's not really any other pageant like that in, uh, Utah, so you guys are kind of unique, and we're kind of unique in that. What was my last thing I was gonna say? Oh, uh, the count, the girls that win and, and hold the county title, uh, serve, have served, uh, mostly with the county fair and doing everything that is asked of them for the week of the county fair, uh, and anything that any of the commissioners over the pageant in that timeframe have asked them to do. I know when I first started, Commissioner Lee was like, I want to use whoever you have, and I know that the girls have been more than willing to, um, show up, perform, speak, and do what is asked of them, so, uh, I know Madison had a lot of opportunities to do that and loved her experience and just actually finished with her degree.
Um, the Miss America Organization is the reason that I completed a double major, um, last semester, and every ounce of that was paid for by that organization and by you guys and the county and all the other titles that I held. And I know that are two girls that you are providing scholarships to right now. One of them is pursuing medical school right now. The other one is pursuing her masters in, I believe, some, yeah, some sort of technology or science, but both of those girls are being able to pursue further education because of what you guys are providing them with.
Is there any questions or, or concerns that we can help put to rest or?
I have, I have, first of all, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
And clearly you've, you've had a positive impact in the community, and appreciate you sharing some of that. The, from our perspective, let me just share, um, I guess to you and, and generally to the public, you know, we have an interesting situation this year in that for the last couple of years, the county has spent into its reserves, essentially having a budget that is not balanced. And to me, that's not a sustainable path, and until we get into their new budget cycle, we won't have an opportunity to try to balance the budget. So this has created a, a unique dynamic and situation for, um, I think the commission this year, in that our only option to try to address the budget at the moment is to go through and find areas that we're spending in, that we could spend less, and make sure that we're doing things that are necessary and the appropriate role or an important role of the government. And so that's part of this process, right? And you're not the only program or the only, um, group out there that has started to face this scrutiny. It's just the reality. And, and frankly, as a taxpayer, I think it's something that you always want your elected officials to do, and to just make sure that you're, you're being cautious of every, every dollar that you're spending. I think that the scholarship point is, is well made. There's another element to this contract, as I understand it, that really has put the county in the pageant business. Because my understanding is that the county, per the terms of this contract, is actually not just paying or providing a scholarship, but also providing for reimbursement of expenses to hold the pageant.
Correct. I can, I can speak to that a little bit. So, uh, when I was, I, I have not, I'm assuming, and I, and I could be wrong, but I'm assuming the contract has stayed very, very close to what I, uh, signed a few years ago. And, uh, in that contract, we were given funds for, or I should say allotment for, uh, the scholarship, and then also the Miss Utah, uh, fees, which include just the licensing fee, and then the, what it costs to have the girls compete there, uh, which is just like housing and, um, a few other small fees that are associated. Uh, and then the other amount that is covered by the county is what it costs to, uh, use a building. So in the past, I know they've used the Covey Center. Uh, when I could, was over the direction of it, we used, um, a county building in Saratoga Springs, the Vista Heights Middle School. So that was obviously going back into helping the county, in my opinion. So that's actually what the funds are, um, allotted for in almost the entirety. There's not much more, uh, anything else that is in need to be paid, uh, when I was, the director was used from what we earned from ticket sales, and, um, we have the girls, uh, ad, go out into the community and ask for sponsorships from the, the, any businesses that they choose in the county, or anybody that they would like to sponsor them. So, uh, that's kind of where the funds are falling, if that helps.
Which, if I may, I think that's a, a good point, and that's something that I would look to, is a lot of times when I see groups like this that are doing something in the community, you do look for support from the private sector, right? From the nonprofit community, or if it's for profit, for sponsorships that are out there. And so I think that's the question is, you know, wouldn't some of these buildings, um, if they were solicited directly, might be willing to provide the space, as, as part of the sponsorship, or is there the, the ability for you to continue what you're doing on the private sector?
I mean, that, uh, uh, the Miss Utah Organization as a whole is a volunteer organization. It's, it's a nonprofit, so all the time that's spent from the directors, people putting the program together, like Madison and I, um, we are all not paid. And so we, I mean, there's a lot of companies that we have talked to and tried, like, for instance, the building that I used, um, gave us the county rate, but we're, we're not willing to give it as a sponsor. We've, we've tried, Covey Center wouldn't even give us a discount, being what it was a Utah County and down the street. So we've tried, if that's what you're asking, correct? And then also other companies, um, outside of that, like you're saying, in the, in the community, are, 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 um, girls' responsibility that compete, their responsibility is to get, uh, ask for sponsor, sponsorships for our ad pages for them. Um, I know in Utah as a whole, they do have some big sponsors. Uh, I know Metal Gold was one for a long time that, that just sponsored, that only sponsored this, the, uh, scholarship for the queen of the, the winner of Miss Utah. Um, and everything else, all of the volunteers, all of the, uh, contestants have to kind of muddle up on their own. Um, and, and we've done that. We've, we've had, um, a lot of companies offer lunch and off to the judges, to the contestants, um, flowers, certain, certain things that they need throughout their year, but no, as, to answer your question, we, we haven't had the opportunity in, as up to this point to find someone that would sponsor, as a private sector sponsor, up until now. I don't think that's kind of.
Are you actually a, an incorporated nonprofit organization?
The Miss Utah Organization?
Yeah.
Yes. As, as, as well as the Miss America Organization, yes.
Miss Utah, but what about the, the pageant? Like, is there?
Miss Utah County?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it.
I, I can speak to that. I've been working with Madison and, and the scholarships organizations attorney, they set up an LLC. So whether they pursue a non, nonprofit status in the future, I don't know, but they're currently set up as an LLC.
To me, it, it almost serves as a, as a proxy for the interest in the community, if it's able to support, be supported on its own. And I, I think that that's important for organizations like yours to be able to demonstrate. Again, these, these funds, another distinction that I, I want to make is that these funds that are proposed in this contract come out of our general fund, which is really money that could be spent for the necessary functions of government. We have another set of funds, that is the, um, tourism tax, that's more to promote tourism and that type of thing, which admittedly, there are functions that we support through that program, which I would not call necessary functions of government, but it's, those are set aside to promote, uh, tourism in our county. So things, we have supported organizations in the past through that, but they have to demonstrate that they're promoting tourism. And, you know, the county fair is another example of this. It's a longstanding tradition, but, you know, I, I am not supportive of spending our general fund dollars to support, um, a county fair organization if, if there's opportunity for this to become self-sustaining on a nonprofit basis, and they're able to generate sponsorships, right? And we have tourism dollars that, that can promote it. So, uh, to me, I'm gonna land in the same place, I think, with this, which is, um, it's not about, you know, what you're doing, you know, but you have the opportunity to, to do this in the private sector on, as a nonprofit, and, um, I, I just, especially in our constrained budget environment, I, I don't see this as, as a use for our general funds, uh, in this year.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm not, uh, I, I don't think that TRCC or TRT money can be used for, for this. And I, I'd look to Paul to s, to kind of verify that a little bit. That, I think there's, there, the parameters around that are not, are of such that wouldn't allow that to happen, but anyway. Um, I, I appreciate the work that you've, you've done, and I, and to, uh, Commissioner Tanner Ainge, his, his, his comments. I think that we need to go through this process and, and look at everything, and I, and I applaud, you know, him for, uh, you know, saying, let's have this conversation. Even though tough as it is, I think that we need to have the tough conversations and ask the questions and, and get the answers, answers to them. I've, I've worked with you in the past, and I, I will, I will admit that there are times I think that you're underutilized, and I, and I, you know, I know when I was, when I was the portfolio commissioner over there, I was trying to find ways, uh, that, that to, uh, to capitalize on that and, and do more, not less, and not just to have a pageant, but to actually have some contribution back into the, into the community. I see us often, um, analyzing things and saying, you know, well, you know, we, we'll put forth or we'll abate taxes for the best interest of the, of, of the county and, and for the, uh, you know, for the individuals and, and for the best interest that, that's out there, and I, and I wonder, I wonder if, if the program had a little bit more robustness to it in the sense of going out in the community. I know in the past, there was a couple of your contestants that had, um, uh, platforms in which they were, they were, they were going and helping children.
All of them actually do have that.
And they do have that, and I think maybe we're not, we're not seeing, we're just not seeing some of the benefit that goes into this. On, on a fundamental basis, I mean, we have, uh, Utah County, Provo, Miss Provo, you have Orem, I mean, everybody, all this, all municipalities seem to have that.
Which are funded by each city.
Which are funded by the cities.
Fully.
And we could call that tradition. We could call that tradition.
I think this is about thirty years of Miss Utah County, yeah.
Right, and so it's, it's this balancing act that we're trying to play, uh, you know, I mean, all of us have, uh, restricted or tight budgets. It's not like we're, we're running flush with cash, um, uh, especially in this, in the, in this county. And so I'm wondering, um, as we, as we look at this, um, this opportunity, and, and especially with, uh, you know, what we've done in the past, if we were to move those off, I, I kind of wonder where we go. Would we get rid of all the Strawberry Dales days and See Steel days and, you know, all those celebrations that we have, and I, I just kind of, I, I'd like to take it slow, look at it, um, and, and, and find a balance, maybe make it more robust as well, so that we can see the benefits and know where the benefits and do more, not less. Anyway, those are some of my thoughts.
Can you explain to me the difference between the Miss Utah County and the Miss Utah Valley?
So, uh, when I was, uh, directing, Commissioner Lee and I, we had a, a wide range of girls competing, um, and so we, we asked if Commissioner Lee would open a, a couple thousand dollars more to, uh, give another girl a title. So it's, they're, they're essentially the same thing, um, they're Utah County and Utah Valley. We, we just had two queens that were able to continue forward instead of just one.
And they both go compete at Miss Utah?
Correct.
They're both there this week.
Yeah, they are clear there.
It's not, it's not that we really added more, it was that we, we divided for more opportunity, is what it was.
Right, correct.
Scholarship got, I think a little smaller.
Sorry, yeah, we just, we just, a lot of the funds.
And if I can jump in real quick, is that at the same pageant? So there's only one pageant that's being produced?
Correct.
Okay, so there's not two pageants and?
It's just two girls that are given the title, two different titles at the same time.
So, so in, in looking at this for me, I think there's significant value in continuing the investment in the scholarship portion. I think that's a, an investment back into our, our youth and, you know, in, in the, into the future leaders of the county, so I think there is significant value there. Uh, I do have concerns about continuing to fund, uh, the pageant itself, because I think we have a robust community that would be happy to get on board with this and, and help, you know. You, you want to make an influence, you're gonna have to run for office, right? When you run for office, you have to fundraise, and so part of the process of learning to be a leader is learning how to reach out into the community and, and find those who are willing to believe in your vision and your dream and, and getting those dollars. So, so one thing I could potentially suggest here that we could maybe do today is, uh, modifying our contract to keep the scholarship portion in place, but dropping out our dollar value for actually promoting and hosting the pageant and, and behoove the, the pageant itself to, to look at, at fundraising for that.
Can I say something? Um, at the moment, uh, that's, I, I, I understand what you're saying, um, at the moment, the girls, the contestants that decide to compete, they, in my opinion, probably bring in more right now than the county actually pays and that what we actually allot towards the program of running the pageant. They actually bring in more than what the county, we actually spend towards the, the program. We actually only use county funds for, like I said, the building. All the rest of it is raised by the girls currently, and then also ticket sales, which they promote as well, so.
What building do you use?
Um, when, be, when I first took it over, the, the current director, um, was using the Covey Center. Um, and I, when I came on board, it was about thirty-five hundred dollars, and so I, uh, chose somewhere else, which was Vista Heights. Uh, and they were gracious enough to give me the county, uh, the county rate. And if you see in there, I think, I think, and I, I, I have it all, I know that, uh, through emails, I've sent an invoice to the county assistant, that was both of your county assistants, but we, we were charged about eighteen hundred from the, uh, from the county bill, from the, excuse me, the middle school for two nights. That was, well, it was about half a day the first and then the full day the next, so.
Reason I ask that is, is that's perhaps a way we could continue to help support, is if we could comp a room or a section of the convention center?
Sure.
As a, as a.
Which right now, when, after Miss Utah fees are paid and after scholarships are paid, I think what the county allot to us were only left at about seven hundred dollars. So we still have to, would have to fundraise that additional about thousand dollars to even have a building to post the, to host the pageant in.
I mean, that would be helpful.
What's the, what's the pageant cycle? So where are you at right now?
So our, the, the two thousand nine, uh, excuse me, two thousand eighteen girls that were que, that were crowned, uh, are currently at Miss Utah right now, uh, this week. And then in August is when we've, we've usually held the pageant, so in August, they would be giving their title up, and we would be allotting, having a new.
Because we haven't had an additional contract signed for that upcoming year, we haven't made any plans, we haven't been able to really follow through with anything going forward, because we don't know where the contracts at.
Ju- just for the commissioner's information, there is a provision in here that says that they may have access to facilities owned by the county. And I believe that says for no charge. Yeah, I, I don't know what, what facilities the county owns that could accommodate that. That is a provision in there. If we, we could require them to try the county facilities first before they go and seek something else. That way they could reduce their own costs.
Commissioner Lee tried to let us use the building a few times for, but it was hard, because a lot of stuff we do is on Saturday. If it needed to be changed, we, we'd be more than willing to change that. Just, they, in a comedy, yeah, more, most oftentimes it's held just on a weekend. But, um, yeah, I know that that was something that you did try to comment.
What's the square footage that you need? What, how big? What's the?
Uh, well, I mean, technically, it's just a stage that we, we have the program on and, and a, a room to conduct the interviews. So that's about all we need per se for, to run the program. So when I was here, we didn't have, the convention center wasn't up and running yet, so it was just in the works.
And to me, that just seems like a, a natural fit. It, it costs us less, it's promoting the county and the county's facility in hosting the project. It's taking, so we're not directly withdrawing money from the general fund. It does get us into that tourism, right? Because if, excuse me, my throat's been bad this morning. If we're, if we're talking about, you know, trying to tap TRCC funding, if we're subsidizing a little bit in that portion of the building for that particular day or usage, then it does come from the TRCC funding.
Cause that's where we're spending the money.
That's where we're spending the money from. So it gives us that opportunity to still support from, from Commissioner Ainge's, his area of suggestion. Really does fit in the, the mold of trying to promote the county, keeps the pageant going. And then we can contribute at the, at the, the scholarship portion, which I think is, is a good investment. But that's just an idea, thoughts are.
The, the issue with that could be, they are pretty booked usually, the convention center, so we'd have to reach out to Danny Wheeler.
We have to reach out to Danny and find a spot, but.
We're, we're more than happy to adjust timeframe. We're not necessarily set for August. I mean, that's just what we've done, but we can, we can, we can adjust.
One thing I'd just like to know, from a community support standpoint, you mentioned that the program brings in more additional funds. Can you give us a sense for where that goes to? Like, what's the overall budget? Cause ours, it looks like it's a two thousand dollar scholarship contribution and an up to five thousand dollars of expense reimbursement to put on the pageant.
Right.
So that's seven thousand, I think it's bled over. Um, in, in the past. But the, what's the overall budget? Do you have a sense for how much is being raised privately?
From, from our standpoint, each girl is required to bring in two hundred dollars in ad pages. So on, on a, most oftentimes, there's eight to ten girls competing. So that can be anywhere from, you know, a couple grand, give or take. Usually, we put that towards the program books, the crown, the, and the banners that they, they are wearing and any additional things that we have to spend for the judges, if there's any, any stays that they have to have or any, any reimbursements. Cause again, that's all volunteer-based, the judges that come judge. And then also, what else are we usually having to?
I mean, we usually provide dinner for the girls the night before, they're, they're all night. We take care of them the day of, we take care of lunch and dinner for the judges. There's usually a gift, because it is all volunteer-based for them, yeah.
That's about, between that and then covering the rest of the building. So I, we in the past haven't alw, the, the county hasn't always, I think the, there's the two thousand for scholarship and then there's about two thousand for the Miss Utah fees and then there's about a little.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Yeah, okay. And then just the remaining of that is what helps us pay for the pageant to actually be run. So any additional funds that the girls are raising is going straight towards putting the program on.
One way commissioners, if I may suggest, just getting creative here, to incentivize the pageant to seek private donations is to structure in this contract some sort of matching system. The county would match up to three thousand dollars or whatever, if they get private donations and provide proof of receipts of that. Something like that, that might be a good way to transition the pageant out of the county and into the private sector. Just a thought, to get, to get creative, I guess.
Thank you. But, and then the scholarship funds, is it, cause you mentioned some great educational programs that some of the past winners are in. But those are signa, were you suggesting that there's additional scholarships that have come in, other than the one or two thousand that the county has?
Meaning for each winner? That, I, I don't, I don't have any idea what each contestant, I mean, I'm sure some of them have gotten scholarships from different schools, different.
Not as a function, there's not other supporters of the scholarship. So when you say like a winner is now in medical school, all we know is that there's a one thousand dollar scholarship.
That one thousand dollars that the county is awarding her in her scholarship is going towards her going to medical school.
Yeah, and, and also to continue to go to, you're, you're providing the fees to go to Miss Utah, where there are more additional scholarships available. And, and actually, I, I talked to Cara, our lawyer last night, the Miss Utah Scholarship Organization's lawyer. And she said that, she was kind of looking back and she said ninety percent of the, of the Miss Utah counties have received additional scholarship at Miss Utah. So it's allowed them to receive more at that level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Should we bring it back up here for discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
To me, based on the comments or the suggestions that I heard from the other commissioners, there would need to be some modifications to this to maybe match potentially providing in-kind services at the convention center or, or something to that effect, in which case, I think that this needs to just be modified. And my motion would be to strike this item until it come, come back in a different form.
So that would mean if we were to strike this item, then Ben could work, you know, with the group and, and, and try to find a modification, you know, probably with us too on an individual basis.
If individually, we can share suggestions and come back with a new proposal?
And if I could get some clarification, we're, the commissioners are okay with the scholarship portion of it? Is that the general consensus I'm getting?
I'm fine with that.
But then as far as the reimbursements for the program, you can, I can reach out to the, the convention center. We could even look at other county facilities, Health and Justice Building has, you know, a large area.
The courthouse, I mean, has the banquet room.
Store courthouse. And then I, I will come back and work with them and work with you and see what we got.
Okay. Three. I move that we strike regular agenda item number five.
Second?
I had a motion in a second to strike agenda item number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. So make sure and work with, with, with Ben and we'll, that just, that just means that it gives us an opportunity to have more discussion and move forward. Thank you. Okay, last on here, except for the tabled item, is to approve and authorize the funding of implement, implementation of the pilot compensation structure for the deputy county attorney's office effective pay period fourteen. And I'm surprised David's not here. David is gone the rest of the week and so is not here. I, I think he would like, like you to entertain this and, and approve it if you will. But he is not available to be here today. I don't see. I think Ralph's here, you can talk to.
Oh, Ralph, there you are, okay.
Ralph. I know that Ralph's been working on it with, with David and Merritt and others. I've actually been in some of those conversations as well and so Ralph, Ralph knows.
So, you know, David and I have been working on a change to the pay, a, a plan for the attorney's office. The county attorney came to us shortly after he started and asked us to look at a classification system that would include all the attorneys into one single, you know, classification of, let's see, deputy county attorney. The intent there is to provide, you know, flexibility and efficiency in the office, the ability of David to utilize, you know, the workforce more. You know, he really feels it'll allow him to utilize the workforce a lot more effectively. The other side of this is to address what he sees to be some, you know, paying equities in the office and to be able to help enhance, you know, performance in the office as a measure and, and allow attorneys to move through the scale, you know, based upon performance, basically. There would be, you know, variation in the ability for an attorney to move through the scale. Again, you know, based upon his measure, he has, you know, set up, you know, some metrics that he can use that I think are very effective, trying to achieve, you know, the goals of his office. And each one of the attorneys would be, you know, held accountable to those every year. He does want to, or he plans to intend to have an annual cycle for reviews. Again, this is a, a trial, so it does have to be evaluated on a regular basis, because it is a new way to look at, you know, compensation for the county. It is only going to be available for the attorneys or, you know, applied, you know, to the attorneys in this case. And with the annual cycle of reviews, at that time, you know, Dave would make the, the recommendation on the, you know, pay increases for those who are, you know, performing, you know, based upon their performance. And then that would be included into, you know, the budget for the following year. So that's the intent, is to, we helped him, you know, build a scale that's essentially, you know, essentially a broadband of all the attorneys. And, you know, part of that plan was for HR to help him figure out where to, you know, place the attorneys on the new scale, which required an evaluation of experience and, over the time they've been here. You know, going forward however, any, like I just mentioned, the increases would be, you know, solely based on, you know, the performance of the attorney, you know, to the metrics that he has actually established already. And so I think that with, you know, proper, you know, controls and a fair amount of oversight, I think this, you know, could be a, a very effective, you know, plan. But it does require, again, a fair amount of oversight with the evaluation, you know, process. And then of course, the approval of, you know, the commission of, of the increases annually.
So generally speaking, very supportive of this. The, the question I would have is, is there a reason that we're not attaching the evaluation metrics to this? Or how are we securing from a logistical standpoint that those are standardized and set?
That's an excellent question.
In conjunction with this, right? Cause I mean, what I have before me is the pay scale. I've had the meeting with David, overall liked the concept. My only concern and the actionable item today is how am I assured that we're connecting those metrics and that they're written out, so that, that everyone in the office has a clear understanding of what's expected in relationship to the pay scale?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point. I know that, you know, David has it already all laid out, you know, the metrics. I think that, and I think we should have attached it in retrospect. I know that the intent is to do the first round of evaluations next year, you know, twenty twenty, you know, tail end of the summer, so that he can have the plan in place for the following year's, you know, budget. So there is, you know, some time to work that out. However, I would also recommend that you have that in place and all the attorneys are aware of what those expectations are, which I believe is his plan. And so I think we, I, like I said, I think we have that, we just didn't attach it. I'm, I'm not sure if it's completely, anything, Rob?
Let me address that real briefly, also I think it will benefit all of you. Currently, our HR rules provide that counties, all merit employees have to use the county-approved performance evaluations. So we're gonna be coming before you eventually anyway with a, a, a modification of that to allow for these metrics. And at that time, I think your concerns can be addressed, because we're gonna have to come before you anyway, with, with essentially an exception to the county-approved form that everybody uses. It'll be a little different for the, for the county attorney's office based upon these metrics. And so, again, you still hold, hold the control, does that make sense? I think you should address, you should address your issue at that time. And, and looking at that, you know, and, and, and working through it, I think it's important to note that that evaluation doesn't even happen till twenty twenty, the fall of twenty twenty. Because everything's gonna be, I don't wanna use the word frozen, but it's, in essence, that, that, that there is no, there's no bump or, or additional through the budgeting cycle and all the way through twenty twenty. That, those, those, this pay scale will stay as is all the way through the twenty twenty period of time. So there's not an evaluation for additional. It won't happen until the fall. So we've got time, we've got time to, to get to that point where we know what the metrics are and, and, and make it appropriate for the, for that office.
Yeah, and just, you know, to clarify that point, that's a really good point, cause I know there'll be a lot of questions about that, is when we evaluated how to move all the attorneys onto the new scale, we took into account what they were expecting as far as an increase this year. And so we.
Front load.
You know, the intent is not to see anyone lose in this transition. But you're right, once we have moved everyone over, they will get at that time an increase, whatever they should have earned or would have expected to have earned. And then it will be, you know, status for about a year until we're able to, you know, do the evaluations later in twenty twenty.
And that relates to the merit increases, correct?
That's correct.
My concern, I haven't had a chance to, to go through the detailed plan of this. I had heard an initial kind of drafts of this. And I think that one concern I have is that this is a double-edged sword. I mean, again, I think I am supportive of having an elected official who wants to proactively manage their department in the best way possible. And so I, I support our county attorney in doing this. I think that the, because it's a significant change and it has the potential to have a significant impact, I just want to be mindful of, and an issue that I care about is having performance of our employees in the county. And so when I speak of double-edged sword, I mean, this should be a way to hold employees more accountable, not less.
Correct.
However, if not managed carefully, this could actually make employees less accountable. And so that's the piece that I was missing as well, is hearing that commitment from the county attorney's office that this is a way that they want to manage the department, but that it will not just lead to people climbing up this scale for their entire career regardless of their performance in the county.
Right, that's exactly right. And that was also something I had said was a concern of mine, but the county attorney does have a pretty, you know, robust plan to hold his, his people accountable and to measure actually what they're doing, you know, to, you know, the goals of the department. So, and I do think it would be wise if we did, you know, reevaluate this each year and see, which I think is the intent. So we can see exactly what's happening with each one of the, you know, each one of the attorneys and what is actually happening as they, happening as they move, move through the scale.
So I would have had David speak to that, but I guess with him being now, can anyone else speak to the fact that that is an underlying factor of, of going to this? Is that there will be?
It is, and I think that, you know, so when this first came to me, I was relatively hesitant of the whole process. And then speaking with Ralph, it was a process going all the way through that we had to iron out back and forth. This is, this is one, I think that, I think with a matrix in place, it, it takes out some of the subjectivity of what we have now with, with the one through five. And in which, for the most part, as I look at it, everyone gets a three and above. I don't even know how many of them, there's a few here and there, and I, and I applaud those ones that are, you know, go through and I, I've seen it. But for the most part, it seems like everyone gets a three and above, because there's not really any matrix in there to, to, to measure appropriately. So this is, this is an attempt to actually have something in place in the way of measuring that's viable and it takes some of the, the emotion out of it and says, here it is, here's what we're measuring you to, did you do it or not? And then it's not looking across at your coworker and saying, I think you're a three, or you're a four, or if, you know, whatever. If, did you do this? Yes or no? And then we can start to measure appropriately. So I applaud that he's trying to go that direction and find, you know, a, a, a better way to measure than, than to just say, everyone's a three and above and we're just gonna step everybody through. So it's, it's, you know, there is, there, with, with us front loading it, there's a little bit of a cost impact to it. It's, I don't know if you've got the final numbers on that, I know we kind of bounced around to a hundred, a hundred thousand.
It's about a hundred and five.
Hundred and five, so.
For this year to get it started.
To get it started, we tried to emphasize that this is gonna be, it's a pilot program in the sense that we're trying to see how it works, to see if, you know, and it'll take some time. There will probably be years that we take a peek at it, cause you can't just measure it in one cycle. Um, and, and so I, uh, again, it took some time for me to kind of get back to where I thought, okay, we're right on. And, and there was, you know, there was some folding back and forth, trying to find the balance, you know, where, where it's at with HR department and also with David as he's trying to, trying to work it so that it works best for his, his department as well. And so there was some compromise in there on, on adjustments. And, you know, and then it take, and after the, after the nuts and bolts were in place, it took a little bit of massaging to get it to where it felt right as well. So I, I, you know, I, I, I was impressed with it. I think that we're, we're at a point to where, um, it, it gives, and I, I'd like that we lay this thing down. Instead of having these thirteen steps, we've got this thirty-five out there. And so somebody can come in over a period of her career and actually start stepping through, you know, a process. Uh, instead of having all these red lines and, and these inequities that go on, um, with redlining and everything else. So I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of, of moving forward. And again, it's, you know, it's gonna take some time to, to work out some of the kinks.
Yeah, and I do think, uh, when we do the evaluation of the program each year, we should expect to see some non-satisfactory, some satisfactory and some that exceed satisfactory. So just like you had mentioned, if everyone ends up being a three or above or whatever the measure is, then I think that that would be an indication that it's not working. But I do think that's, is the intent of David's and I believe that that's what will happen.
I would move that we approve regular agenda item number twelve.
Second?
In a motion and a second to approve a regular agenda item number twelve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Okay, on my notes, we don't need number thirteen, but we need fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. Is, we need number, does anybody need number thirteen?
Move that we strike regular agenda item number thirteen.
In a motion and a second to strike agenda item number thirteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero.
If we approve and set a date, time and location for closed meetings, uh, for today's date, uh, this location following completion of the regular agenda for regular agenda items number fourteen, fifteen and sixteen.
Second?
In a motion and a second to approve and set a date, time and location for closed meetings for fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero. Okay, um, uh, we do have a, a work session item. Uh, Robert, if you wanted to a- address that. And this, um, this, this works, we talked about this work session item in our department head meeting. Um, it has some ramifications. It's coming up really close. It scares some of us half to death. And, and the reason for this, uh, work session item is to discuss it. But probably even more important than that, as, as we look down through it, and I think, well, it was, it was posted, so it's, so it's on our, it's on our agenda. As you can see the resolution. We would love to have the employees look at it, have everybody have a chance to, to, to peek at it and, uh, give some input into what this resolution does. But Robert's gonna tell us about what it can do.
Okay, thank you, Robert Moore County Attorney's Office. Just to kind of give you some indication as to why this is, uh, necessary. Uh, this last legislative session HB one sixty-three was passed. And that bill, um, which flew under the radar, I think by most people, dealt with, um, the personal use of public property by public servants. And if, essentially had a special effective date of July first, two thousand nineteen. Now, when I say public servants, that refers to elected officials, appointed officials, employees, judges, uh, contractors. It's very broad as to who it applies to. And as I've mentioned, it, it applies to, to personal use of public property. And I think, as I understand, the basis of reason why the HB one sixty-three was passed was that there was some claims of, uh, uses of public property by employees or other public servants that may not have been appropriate. That did not come from Utah County. That came from other jurisdictions in the state of Utah. Um, so Utah County was not ever named or, or can, or can, had this issue that I'm aware of. These other jurisdictions, so that, so they, uh, passed this bill. And when UAC and other jurisdictions started finding out about the bill after it passed, cause again, it flew under the radar, I think an alarm kind of sounded. Um, and, and why is that? Why is there an alarm? Because if you, if you use public property for personal use, um, there is a penalty of a felony level, level charge in this, uh, bill. So for example, I'm gonna give you some examples and, which is a fair reading of this bill. If I take this pen home that I'm holding in my hand, that is county property, after July first, without a written policy, I could be committing a felony for my personal use of this pen. Um, if I have a refrigerator in my office and I, um, put waters in there or something of that nature and it takes some electricity, or I plug my phone in, my personal cell phone in, to the county, to the county outlets and use electricity, I could be committing a felony after July first. Um, if I have a, a car, a signed a car, like in the sheriff's office, for example, and, um, my wife says please, or, or a wife says, or some other family member says, hey, can you stop by and get some milk for dinner on your way home? And this, an officer does that, they could be committing a felony. Um, and it's not only committing a felony, I make a copy for, um, I have a medical diagnosis. I want, I got an email with it and I wanna print it out, or I'm gonna make a copy of it. I'm committing a felony. I think that's the concerns and it's, it's that broad. And, and the, you know, it sounds like I'm, oh, we're kind of Chicken Little here a little bit. But it, it really has been that loudly protested and complained of throughout the entire state. Um, I know that it, the attorneys, a lot of the, um, county and city attorneys and other attorneys for jurisdictions have been meeting with the bill sponsor and he has acknowledged that, um, there's some corrections that need to be made to the bill. But in the meantime, uh, we're, we're, we're stuck with what we have. Now, I'm not, let me just mention, besides a felony, it also applies, it would have the ability to, um, have you no longer be employed by the governmental entity or, or as an elected official, no longer associated with that public entity. You would also lose your URS contrib-, uh, uh, retirement as part of this. And you, and there, there are a number of other things that are, are very concerning. It applies to all jurisdictions, um, that are government type jurisdictions, counties, local districts, internal local entities. And so it has a very broad base. Uh, so that's, that is what kind of got me here. And I, and I was asked by the commissioners to, to your credit, to try to draft something, a written policy. And why do you ask me to do that? Because but if, come July first, whatever policy we have on the books is what we're stuck with. Because you can't retroactively fix a problem. The bill even says that. So, so, so you're kind of stuck with whatever you have effective July first, there are policies on the books. And so I was asked to draft a policy, which a lot of other jurisdictions are doing as well. Trying to get a policy on the books prior to July first related to public use of personal property. Now, let, let me, let me give a caveat though, um, on this. This policy that the commission, that you, you gratefully said, please draft something that'll protect our employees, protect our public servants from being charged with a felony unfor- unknowingly violating HB one sixty-three. And you were very, all of you were very concerned about that. And, and I applaud that. I think that's, that's a good thing. Because clearly taking a pen home is not meant to have a felony level charge for, for, for employee or for another public servant itself. But, um, I, I think as this pol-, we looked at this policy, it was not meant to, um, give the ability of employees or public servants to misuse, uh, public property. To take, uh, a search and rescue camper out for the weekend with their family. That's not what this policy is meant to cover. This policy is meant to cover the, again, the, the things that are incidental and the things that are typically happen. Um, not, you know, making a phone call from, from a cell phone that's provided by the county to, for a personal phone call. Looking on the internet at your, uh, bank statement, um, something of that nature. Those things, this is meant to, to allow for those incidental type uses or really nominal type uses of, of employees and public servants. So let me, let me address, if I could, um, briefly what's in the policy. And it is on the agenda. I did attach it. Uh, we did discuss it yesterday. It's a resolution, uh, creating an acceptable use policy in Utah County. And how I started with this policy is I looked at other jurisdictions and I reviewed approximately seven jurisdictions throughout the state, um, who have provided to me a copy of this policy. And, and I, I echo what Commissioner Lee says. I would hope that employees would take a look at this. Um, that's the reason why we put on a work session first. We wanted as much information as we could to get out. That's why we had a department head meeting, had this discussion. We spent a better part of an hour having this discussion yesterday and answering questions. Trying to make sure the information gets out. I think the commission mentioned about enlisting HR and, and helping get the information out as well as, as we go through this. But what's in the policy? Uh, in the whereas language, it talks about why the policy is necessary and it kind of mentions some of the things I've said. But I tried to, we tried to attack it on, on three, on three levels. Um, number one, we tried to have a written policy that had, that authorizes use by public servants. Um, employees, elected officials, et cetera. Uh, and that's in this policy. The second thing we tried to do is to try to tie that authorized use of public property so long as the value of that use is, uh, does not surpass a threshold, a certain value threshold. And if it's less than that value threshold, which we have not, currently it's blank in here. But if we have that value threshold, then anything below that would be considered incidental. Incidental authorized use of, of that public prop- property by a, by a, by a public servant. Personal use of that public property by a public servant. Again, kind of a tongue twister with all those Ps, but, um, and the third thing I put in here, uh, well, third thing I put in here as relates to the main part of the policy is that if there is an unintentional, unknowing violation where, where, um, there's a savings clause that I put in here. And that is that an employee, a public servant, et cetera, could, um, pay the value of that use back and not be in violation of this policy. Or if it does cost the county some money, they could in fact reimburse the county for that. And again, not be in violation of this policy. Other jurisdictions are doing very similar provisions as to this as well. Trying to avoid public officials, um, public employees, et cetera, from being, uh, charged with felonies and authorizing, again, you know, the idea is to try to capture as much as we can with, with, again, the whole idea is not to authorize improper use. Uh, you know, again, the ATVs, taking ATVs out for personal use for fun, other kind of county equipment, taking computers home, you know, whatever. That's not, that's not the intent of this policy. The intent of this policy is to try to prevent, um, employees from being, a couple of other things in this po-, in this policy to be aware of. Number one, we talk about, um, what's encouraged to be used. If you're gonna use, um, public property for personal use, how to use that? By not damaging it, by not violating any policy of the county, not disrupting or impeding the, the use of the public property, not creating a security risk. And I won't go through all of them, but, but there's, there's that. There's also a provision here that allows, um, the commission to, um, authorize property, public property for personal use for fringe benefits. Sometimes that is part of a, a position in the county. You authorize a car. You authorize, uh, a telephone or an iPad and for use, for really most of it's public use. Because you, they're benefiting the county as they use those things. But this allows the commission to do that. In addition, if there are violations or concerns, um, the commission has the authority in this, as written in this policy to withdraw the authorization. So if you become aware that, that an employee or a public servant is, is doing things that would be inappropriate, you can certainly withdraw that, um, that authorization. In addition to that, that public employee could be disciplined under our HR rules. And in addition to that, if it's not a public employee, but it's, it's a public servant, um, official, excuse me, such as a, um, a elected official, uh, a judge or some other way, you could censor those individuals. Um, we, so those are some of the options that we have in this policy. I've, I've tried to draft it in such a way that, that we have addressed those things that give us the biggest concern. But, um, I've kind of given you a big, big overview of this policy. Do you have questions or things you, topics you would like to talk about at this time?
I, I don't. I just thank you, thank you for this. I know we've had a lot of conversations with it, all of us. Um, and I think this is, uh, you know, the policies in there. Uh, I think maybe one, one of the, one of the things that, that I'd like to, to, to just state as we're working down through this is that we're trying to work with the bill sponsor on this. We, we anticipate that he'll take this up again next year. This feels a little bit like a Band-Aid until we get to that point. Um, but we don't want to just say, uh, as, as, as a commission, the sense I have is as a commission that we're not taking this seriously. We're trying to find, we're trying to find a way in which everyone wants to work here in Utah County and not say, July first, I'm done and I'm gonna, and I don't wanna resign. They, they, that this is a place to work and, and, and that they feel like that they're not gonna have the cameras watching them all the time or some other employees thinking they're taking a pen home or whatever and, and causing chaos with, within the organization. So I appreciate, you know, the, the fact that we're trying to find a balance in here that, um, that kind of works with the bill sponsor to, understanding that they're statewide, there's been some problems that, uh, that they're, they're fearful of and they want to, uh, protect the county resources and, or the, you know, governmental resources in an appropriate way. And I think that they're trying to do that. This one kind of swung a little bit too far, in my opinion, and we need to deal with it as it kind tries to come back to something reasonable.
And let, let me just say, and I appreciate that, that I've tried to work within the parameters of HB one sixty-three with this policy. And statewide jurisdictions are all drafting policies. And if we were not to draft a policy, we would be in the extreme minority by, by not doing so. I, I, and I think it's, it's pretty consistent that it's important to have a policy. I agree. The sponsor has agreed that he's going to, um, look at it in two thousand twenty general session. Um, there's some language being drafted to help with that. But until that's approved, you know, we, we have to deal with it. And I think, I think statewide, everybody's in the same boat we are. And we weren't one of the original violators, the ones that they're concerned about. It wasn't Utah County.
One, one thing that, that I would say is, you know, I strongly support having the, the appropriate misuse prop-, uh, you know, policies in place at the county level. That's something that I still hope that we get in at the end of this year. The right policies that have been flagged in the past that we haven't updated. Conflict of interest policies, misuse of government property, um, that type of stuff. We, we just, the taxpayers and the public at large needs to be protected. And there's no reason why any elected official or any other public employee should seek protection from misusing government property. So at our own county level, we need to have strong policies there and, and enforce them. This is an issue, right? It's the state. The state has already passed this. And we don't have the ability, even with this, right, to preempt state law.
Correct.
And so I think that's what we're saying is there's, there's some interesting parts of the way this particular law is drafted at the state level that the electricity, right, or the use of a pen, you know, could theoretically, I don't think anyone would ever prosecute that. But theoretically, uh, that, that could be picked up in this language.
It could. And that's the reason for the policy.
Now, but I also wanna point out, my read of this law, and I just wanna correct this or make sure that I'm not misunderstanding this, is that whatever you, we put in this policy, it does not change the law at the state level.
You are correct.
And so when I see here, there are a number of prongs, right? There's a number of prongs in this law that says that, you know, for example, the public servant, this is how it's defining authorized personal use. First, they have to be authorized to use it. And the primary purpose of using the property is to fulfill their public duties.
Correct.
And the third is just that at the time they're using it, it's pursuant to a written permission.
Written policy.
Written policy. So we are only providing the written policy with this county document, a blanket county policy. But they would still be, every one of us are still subject to the other prongs of this. In other words, even if we're in compliance with their county policy, but we, it is not incidental use or it's not pursuant to our, the primary, not primary, primarily for our public responsibility, we could still be in violation of this state law.
Potentially. And I think, so that's the why, reason it was drafted the way I did, as you, as you've highlighted in the sta-, in the HB one sixty- in the sta- in the HB one sixty-three, there are two separate areas of authorized, uh, use. One is related to the written policy, and the other one is related to value, the incidental type uses. And so this is meant to draft both, deal with both of those issues. In addition, the county, by the way I've drafted this, is having it such a way that you have made certain findings right now. And certain findings are that, you know, uh, for example, that the, the public, the public property, the public, uh, benefit to the property, the public use of the property substantially outweighs someone's, a public servant's personal use of that property. Uh, I've already put that in here. I've already put in, as I mentioned, those savings clauses. I, I went a little different than Salt Lake County did, they put savings clauses in there, but I think theirs may have a little more difficulty, because what they did is, they just left it without any kind of findings. I put a finding in there that you're pre-authorizing this, this, that, this way of sa- a savings clause, if you will. They didn't have that in there.
Can we do that, as, as a county, can we, do we have the right?
There, there is some risk to that.
What is incidental? Even though the state did it?
Well, the incidental part, I think we can set the value, I think we can set that, set the value. And I think it's what jurisdiction are trying to do, is to, is to maneuver within this. Can I promise you that it's never gonna be challenged or, or upheld? I, I can say that I've done my best to work within the parameters. There are some jurisdictions that just basically said, you know, exempt everybody. And, and I don't think you can do that on HB one sixty-three. I've tried to work within one HB one sixty-three to make it work, so I, so I appreciate what you're saying. But can I also say that there, there is not some risk? There, there is risk, that some things may not be upheld. The savings clause is probably the most at risk. If someone violates our policy and does that, and we, we are, we are saying currently, if you accept the policy, that they can, they can fix it, and you're okay with that. If they fix it within thirty days and pay the value, right, or they pay what it costs the county, you're saying that's okay. Um, and you're pre-authorizing that. That's different in Salt Lake County, you're pre-authorizing it, I'm saying that you're preau- they don't say preauthorization for that. That's probably one that's a little tougher, that, that could be subject to some challenge. I think most jurisdictions are trying to do something like that, though, because, you know, we can't think of everything. We try, we do our best, but there are things that we, we don't think of sometimes, and we wanna have the ability to, that they can, it wasn't meant to be an intentional violation of the policy, but yet they might be subject to the felony, and so this is a way, a potential way for them to fix that with your authorization.
So, so a question on that, on that preauthorization part, would it be stronger for us to put some sort of dollar figure on there? Or dollar value on there? Because if it's, if, if it's ten thousand dollars, or if it's twenty bucks?
Uh, you, you could certainly do that, remember this, though. Even if you pre-authorize the, you still have the ability to go after them through their HR rules, right? So if someone does something, um, even if they fix it so there's no felony level, again, that's within thirty days. So you, you're not talking about a long period of time here. It's a mistake that's made, and they're fixing it. You still have the ability to go after, I should say go after, that's, that's a hard term, but to, to deal with the issue through the disbaring process. So that's not gone away, you have the ability to do that.
Are we anticipating that that mistake is made, and that the individual comes and says, oh, you know what? This, this mistake was made, and I need to pay that back? Or is it something where somebody else catches it? Because if it's, where somebody else catches it?
It could be either one of those.
It could be.
It could be either one of those.
Months and years from the actual incident.
It could be any of those, it definitely could, yes. And, and i- if you don't like that provision, I think it's helpful to have it, just because we just don't know. And that, that's, that's the fear we have somewhat here, is the unknown, and that's why other jurisdictions are dealing with it too, that way. And, and I appreciate what you said, Commissioner Ainge, um, we're looking at policies that we can help with the county. For example, to, you passed one earlier today, and that's a whistleblower policy, that allows, and actually requires county employees to, to report misuse. And so, one of those things you can kinda check off, that, that's happened today. Uh, and so that, those, those things are, are happening, it's, it just takes a little bit of time, but yeah. That was on your agenda today, so, and that kinda oxygen dovetails in this policy a little bit.
Sure.
So, uh.
Yeah, and, and I, and I do appreciate that work, and that's what I wanted to point out is, on the county level, we've actually been upping that policy, right, increasing.
Upping our game a little bit, yes.
The, the accountability there.
Sure.
And this is just responsive to what the state is doing.
Yes, I, I'm not sure that we would've had a draft like this on your agenda but for HB one sixty-three. And so, we, 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 we have to do something, I, in my opinion.
And, I mean, for me, without, without the state law, this is an absolute no, right? Cause we just address it through our own policies and procedures. But because of this law, it's forced us to act, and.
Correct.
Sometimes you do the best with what you've been given, and I think that you've made a very good attempt at doing that here.
I've tried to, I'm not infallible, that's why I wanted the department heads to look at it yesterday, hopefully, and maybe someone will, will comment today, um, as to concerns they have. I have not, anyone reach out to me personally and say, I'd like to change this. Again, I, I have reviewed at least seven different policies statewide, the ones that I've had access to. And, uh, I've taken, I think, some of the best from those, and then added some of our own things that I came up with.
Well, I appreciate that too, cause the ones that you sent to me to, to, to look at, it looks, it looks to me like there's some that are way on different ends.
That there are.
And, and so ours, the one that you've drafted here, um, s- does look like it's trying to, you know, trying to fit that.
Trying to stay within the parameters of one sixty-three, cause it, you know, I, I appreciate what you said, Commissioner Ainge, that's, that's my concern too, is, I want something that's defensible. But, but not only defensible, but, you know, protects the employees, protects the public servants, but also doesn't give a concern to the public at large that the county employees are out there just misusing all that public property that they're paying for. Clearly, that, that is meant to be covered in here too. I mean, we're, we're trying to make that balance, and, and the only reason we have to do this balance right now is because of HB one sixty-three.
Thanks, Rob.
I'll, I'll be happy to respond to other questions if you'd like.
Okay, uh, it is a discussion work session, I don't know if there is any comments to it, if there is, or not. If there's, if there's not, but you do have some other, after you kinda review it a little bit more, if you'd like, you can reach out to, to Rob or any, any of the commissioners, but probably Rob would be the best, uh, focal point with that, and I know for additional comments to it.
Please, please do, and just be advised, I'll be here this week, but not next week, so.
So, so Rob, just in the way of getting it out, cause I, I know all the employees are watching this meeting.
Good.
But.
I would hope so.
It's so riveting every week, right? Um, it, it, I think it's important for us to get it out for all the employees to see it. In working with HR, what is, what is the best way for us to make sure that they, they, they get this in their hands, so they can? Is it, is it send it out on, on everyone email, uh, basis? What's, what's kinda the thoughts to, so that they all see it?
You could do that, I, I think you might wanna defer a little bit to the, uh, department heads who are here, and ask them what they think, cause they, they know their employees better than I do. And, uh, is it gonna cause a firestorm by doing it that way, or is it, or without, without viewing the video today, and knowing what, what's behind it, or having the department head talk to them about it? If that's what they, you know, we can do that, I can, you can put a little synopsis of what we talked about today, and why, and attach HB one sixty-three so they can see the concerns, um.
I, I think that's valid, why don't we put something together, get it with HR, and get it to all the department heads, and then they can disseminate it back?
And again, I just wanna reiterate, I just, I have a little bit of worry. Not the way that you've communicated, Rob, but just the way that this can be presented. I think we could do a disservice to employees by showing them the authorized use policy, and saying, this is the policy that if you stay within, you're safe. Because they need to, everyone needs to appreciate that the state law still overlays that, and they have to comply with the state law.
Yeah, and, and there was some discussion about that yesterday at our department head meeting. There is a little bit of level of trust, and I, I appreciate the commission for, for being willing to, to give some of that trust here to employees. But if they misuse and abuse this policy, as you said, they still might be subject to that felony, but also they could be subject to the county commission revising the policy. Um, we just have to have a policy in place, and, um, if we, we could revise it at any time. And you could say, look, this isn't working, you guys are out there abusing it now, and so this is not working, we are gonna have to revisit this. And, and that.
The options are terrible, though.
They are terrible.
That's, that's horrendous. If we do something, at least we have some sort of defense with it, so.
I do have to do something.
We've gotta do something. Doing nothing, and just saying we're gonna rely on the state's policy, and, I mean, that's, that's horrendous.
I'll work with Ralph this week, and we'll, we'll get something together. I don't know if you want me to put it on, I won't be here next, next Tuesday. If you want me to put it on for the following Tuesday?
By the first, for sure.
I'll be done by the first, this is a resolution, so it doesn't require any kind of period of time before it's effective. So if you want me to put it on for the twenty-fourth, I can do that, that too, whenever you prefer. That'll give us a couple of weeks for employees to have a chance to look at it, and then they can come to our meeting if they, they'd like to, or talk to me, or Ralph, or somebody in advance.
My, my personal inclination would be to do next week, just, cause if we have to continue it.
That's fine, too.
We've still got the buffer, if there was.
Mr. Dave Shawcroft is aware of this policy very well.
Right, and, and that's kind of a dis- just a dis- that would be my thought. Cause then if we have something come up, maybe in public comment, or, you know, in comment next week that makes us wanna adjust it, then we would have that week, and we're not sitting in the meeting on the twenty-fourth going, no.
Yeah, we, we're gonna have to get this decided and, and approved, uh, hopefully, by the commission.
So that, that would just be my thought, is if it's on there, and we have to, we can certainly continue it from our application.
We'll mention that in the email that we're putting it on for the seventeenth, I believe, no, eighteenth, excuse me, that's, I guess the eighteen.
I move that we continue, oh, well, this is not a motion.
Nope, uh, nope, we'll put it on.
Okay, um, work session's over, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our, our closed meetings, thank you.